Okay, we will open the meeting. Please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
So, we have two people that aren't here tonight. And we have a couple of things on our agenda that we need to postpone. One is the swearing in of a new officer. That will happen next meeting. And our action item of the change order for wastewater treatment, that is being deleted as well. So, any other changes to the agenda, council? If not, let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the September 12, 2022 council meeting. Approval of the September 16, 2022 payroll in the amount of $136,244.72. Approval of June finance report. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Acceptance of the beautification commission minutes. Resolution approving employment in the police department. Approval of liquor license for Casey's number 4306, which is at 1601 West Burlington Avenue. Approval of special claims, a Visa and USPS post office in the amount of $10,198.93. Approval of total claims in the amount of $605,939.78. We had one claim over $75,000 to Maxwell Construction for the amount of $386,222.33. I would like to note on beautification commission minutes, there was a note. Did I print that out? No, I didn't. There was a note of a project that I just wanted to quickly send these pictures down. It has to do with a public art on the railroad on Overpass on Second Street. Those are three examples. These aren't approved, but these just give you rendering examples. Chad Starling came to the volunteer center and is interested in doing this project. There are lots of hoops that have to be gone through. Shinaz is talking to the railroad and to the DOT. We've made a connection with our insurance, so there's several hoops to go through. These are not final designs, by the way. So, there'll be a process to go through of what that's going to end up looking like, what kind of wording that he should use. But apparently Chad has been interested in doing this for some long time. We are having problems with graffiti on those two pillars. So, this is a really fantastic project. I'm really excited about it because I love his work anyway. And so, I just wanted to give you a heads up that probably sometime, I would imagine the next six months, we hope to have all the details worked out and all the approvals, and then we'll come back to the city and ask for your, hopefully, your stamp of approval. Okay, so that's the one thing that I want to mention on those beautification minutes, just so you had a heads up. With that, I would take a motion to approve. And normally, we would have Doug approve anything.
I did the receipts and they were very straightforward.
Okay, so nothing there to discuss. Okay.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved. Any other discussion? Questions? Okay, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, thank you. There's no public form or appearances, so we will move right on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. I'd like to open the public hearing on the matter of disposal of city assets. This was discussed last week as well. Melanie, do you want to say anything about that? Oh, yeah, before I open the public hearing, I guess, why don't you say whatever, and then I'll open the public hearing officially.
I just wanted to add that there were two items added at the bottom of the list. We've had some people come in over the last week having interest in the smaller buildings that are there. I was going to demo them, but I guess some people want them. So, I added those to the list from the last council meeting.
Okay.
And again, some of these items are going to be given away. Some of them will be sold for scraps. Some will be sold as they are. And the items that are sold will be sold, like the buildings, will have their own bid process.
Okay, okay, sounds good. So, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak to this issue? Shinaz?
She wants it to come up.
I told her to come up, just to see if I could.
I do appreciate that DOT and she contacted Habitat for Humanity to give a lot of the items out of the DOT building. We definitely can use the money and it's going back into the community, building homes. So, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, yes, this is how the world turns, I guess you could say. Anybody else want to talk to that specifically? If not, I'll close the public hearing and let's go to the action item. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to, you know, approve this list.
I would approve the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Gandy. Or was that you? Tohill, Tom? Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
It's just going so fast. I'm not ready for the next thing. Okay. Next action item, consideration accepting Step Two sanitary sewer conveyance project as substantially complete. Mr. Pedrick?
This is just following up from last month. You did the partial release of retainage. There's a letter kind of explaining what we're doing here. I don't know if anybody was trying to fall asleep last night, if you looked through it or not. But at any rate, we're saying the project is substantially complete. Things are kind of a little bit out of order on this project, and that has to do with the fact that we've been working with the contractor for a long time trying to get this punch list wrapped up. And so, it essentially ate up all of your warranty period is part of what this letter is. So, the warranty actually expires September 30th of this year. And that is a USDA technicality once the project is substantially complete. You're accepting it tonight, but it was actually put in service over a year ago. And so, that was when the largest part of the sewer was accepting sewer, you know, and being used. So, the city's been using this sewer for over, almost a year now. And so, typically, this would happen, you know, shortly thereafter. But like I said, we've been working on this whole punch list thing, and we've made some progress. There's still a fair bit of stuff left. It's a pretty long list that you flip through there. And there's potential, there could be some stuff that still needs to be addressed in the spring. At this point, speaking with Melanie, the thought is, is that we've kind of reduced this list a little bit to a pretty manageable level, and that if there's anything left to finish up seating-wise, that the city would probably cover that in its spring.
Has this been problems with the contractor getting some of these things done?
Well, it's been, yes and no. This has been a very good project. I would say this contractor has been amazing to work with when they're here. Once the project reached that substantial completion, like September of last year, it sort of turned to a ghost town very quickly. And so, they have a sub that's supposed to be doing the seating for them. And it's all been seated one time, at least. There's been some that have been redone already. And walking through the project, we've walked through it, I don't know, at least half a dozen times over the past year. It, I would say that it's generally got coverage everywhere. You know, we're normally looking for at least 70% coverage. And I think it probably meets that in almost all places. There have been several complaints just about, you know, that it's maybe not as perfect as the person's adjacent yard and that kind of stuff. And I, part of the reason we did it this way is related to, if anybody was on council from Libertyville Road Sewer, we did that partial release of retainedage really early on in the project. And then it was like two years of hounding the contractor to get them to finish. And so, we didn't release this retainage, you know. We've been trying for a year now to get them to finish it, and it, you know, we've done our best. And I think at this point, the USDA money has to be spent by the end of the year. And we're getting to the point where, yes, we've had some rain recently, but I think it's still really dry out there. And the chances of getting it to take this late in the year when it's this dry is getting slim. So, that's kind of where we are. I don't know if you wanted to add anymore, Melanie, but yeah.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, it's, so, yeah, I mean, I would say that if there's property owners out there, I mean, we haven't forgotten you. The city is, you know, we're not walking away from this project, so.
Okay, great. So, is there a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Moved by Tohill?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Tohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Next action item, consideration of authorization to transfer funds to Iowa State Bank. Erin, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, I was doing some research on some of our investments and was checking with some of the local banks for rates. And Iowa State Bank had a rather favorable rate and felt that compared to what our money market was at this point in time, it would be wise to transfer our money market account to Iowa State Bank. The unfortunate part about it is when I was doing the checking, it was before the FUD changed their rates again. And so, kind of stuck with that at this point. But that, after checking with the banks, that's where I came up with.
Okay, so, and the next one has to do with Washington State Bank. So, do you want to kind of put that all together and then we'll do these one at a time?
Again, a similar statement. IPAT, we had $3 million with IPAT, which is the state investment place. But their interest rate wasn't as good as what, going through this process and having money here locally compared to at the state is, I guess, would be my recommendation and preference. But that's where we had the money at the time, but would recommend changing that back to here.
So, let's go to the first action item, consideration of authorization to transfer funds to Iowa State Bank.
If you want to let them, yeah. If you want to give Ron an opportunity.
How much, I'm sorry, how much is that, the transfer that we're doing again? I didn't copy off that for Iowa State Bank?
The one to Iowa State Bank would be $4.1 million, and the one to Washington State would be $3 million.
Okay, so, Erin, just, you know, we know that Ron Haynes here is from Midwest One where the money is now. So, maybe, let's, Ron, if you wouldn't mind, if you want to say anything, you know, to give additional information to the council members before they make a decision?
Yeah, probably two things with this. One, Erin had contacted me. We are looking at adjusting the current money market rate just with the conversion component of things. Got a few things on the fight where we're working to get that wrapped up and should be able to have that wrapped up soon, just from the money market standpoint. From the CD investment side of things, based on the dollar amount, we had sent out, I had Jeff Burkhart, our regional manager with us, with me tonight, that had sent out as far as a bid for that at, for the 12-month at 3.75 rate percent as far as rate for those monies. So, I would ask that the council consider that as part of that to generate a federated return for the city, of course, still keeping those monies local. Certainly understand that diversity and the community investment with the other financials as well. But from a rate of return standpoint, I think it's a pretty favorable rate for the city on that front.
You said 3.75?
3.75.
For 12-month?
Yep.
Okay.
Did, in this, thank you, Ron. I could ask a question to the city administrator. Did we, I'm reading the letter from Midwest One. You mentioned that those banks, I believe, Washington State Bank and Iowa State Bank reached out to you?
No, I was checking rates and went to them and checked. I wasn't actually asking for bids, but I was just checking rates, and that was some of the bids that they, or the offerings they were doing at the time.
Did you reach out to Midwest One?
Yes, I went and got their rates, which at that time, of course, this was before the range.
Right.
It was considerably lower.
Do you remember what those numbers were compared to what the numbers are in this letter?
0.85?
0.85.
0.85?
Yeah, if I'm reading.
That's within your memo that you sent to us.
I got it.
So, at the time that you made your calls, Washington State Bank was offering 2.8 for a, was that a 12-month CD?
Yes.
And Iowa State was offering 2.9 for a 12-point CD?
Yes.
And what did Midwest One offer?
0.85 is what it says on here.
Is that what they offered, 0.85?
No, 0.85.
0.85 is what they offered for a 12-month CD?
I got to find the radar.
I'd have to ask Ron, but that's what we have, and that's what we were given here.
Yeah, as far as from our, from our rate sheet on our website, that would have been correct. With public funds, we always go through a bid process from our side, especially for entities that are current customers of ours that we've got a strong relationship with, to try and make those as aggressive and, as beneficial for that entity as possible, so.
So, how do we find out? How do we get the 8.85%? Is that from a conversation with them or their website?
That's off their, I got the, I went and got their rate sheet from the office over there.
Okay, and as far as Iowa State Bank and Washington State Bank, how do we get that information?
Walked in and got the rates from them, same way.
And now, you're offering not 8.85, not 8.5, or 0.85, rather, but 0.75?
3.75. Yeah, based off of a bid, Mr. Gandy, based off of a bid process for public funds, we'd have bid significantly higher for those funds.
I see. And I note in the memo from our city administrator that Iowa State Bank agreed to waive any early withdrawal penalties.
And we would have that accordingly with ours as well.
You would match that?
Yep, yep. And we've gone through with the current city accounts and are getting those fees waived based on the transition from First National Divinity. So, that's getting wrapped up. I just talked to our back office folks today. They're finishing that up for us today, so.
I do have one other question, then. You said that you got these quotes prior to the
The Fed rate change.
The Fed rate change. You got all the quotes prior to that, or were they kind of, they were all prior to that?
No, that was all done at the beginning of
Okay.
Last week or the week before. Well, I guess, what's the 16th is when I got the rate sheet from Midwest One.
So, would I be correct in probably assuming that all four of these rates may be different if we went back today?
Yes, I would guess so.
And later that, should we maybe get a bid from all of these banks with the new rates? And allow them to go through this bid process?
If that's what the council wants, I would, if we're going to accept, or if we're not going to accept anything, I would prefer to go to a big system then, than accept something that happened after the fact or happened before to do that.
Right, so I would make a motion not to take any action on this action item and readdress or relook at current interest, current bids from the four banks listed.
Yeah, direct the city administrator to seek bids from each of the banks and then present that to the council. And the bids would be roughly about the same time. They're all giving the same time, giving the same amount of time. Five banks.
Five banks listed. I just noticed I counted wrong.
Ron, how long is your offer in effect?
Well, this is, it's no longer a private bid, so that's, that's the difficult part about this, too. So. We can certainly go back through and rebid based on the request from Mr. Quaker. The, I also want to go back and look at the Washington State CDs because they're not a very favorable rate at this point either. So, I'll just, I think we still would like to keep things separate or in different sections, but.
I think it's really advisable not to see it all moved into any particular, I mean, I think it's really important that it be spread around. I mean, for many reasons, I just, I really feel much more comfortable seeing it in that way that.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of putting all our eggs in one basket either.
Right, I would make sure they had several baskets.
So, you have a motion from Tom?
Okay, so, yes, your motion is to get bits from all the banks?
For close bids.
And I'll second it.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to get close bids. Martha second it. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
So, I take that to mean that no one is going to, I mean, obviously, we're not going to make a motion on the transfer to Iowa State Bank or transfer to Washington State Bank.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
So, no action on those items. Okay. Okey-dokey. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Consideration of naming depositories.
All we did, we were changing fund amounts into each bank so that we could change, transfer those funds. I suppose we could do that now, or we can wait on that also at this point.
Do you want to tail that till the next round?
That's fine.
Can I ask?
Council, what's your preference?
Question, I noticed the amounts are different, larger for Midwest One Bank, is that correct?
Yes, because they hold the majority of the funds that we have at this point in time.
Okay.
We need to, because of the fluctuation, the money coming in during tax time and all that stuff, we need to make that fund much bigger.
So, is 20 million, do we need to get that up now before the tax money comes in?
No, that one's, that one didn't change. The changes were at Iowa State and Washington State Bank.
Okay.
Also, when we receive notes and we get a bond come in, bond money come in, we've gotten written up before by the state auditor that our funds exceeded, even though it was for a matter of hours, it exceeded what our resolution said. So, we need to make sure we keep that high enough. When we received the 29 million from the wastewater treatment plant, that's what kind of tipped us over the top that one time.
So, are you suggesting both, either one of you to go ahead and do this tonight, or do you want to wait?
We can go ahead and do it tonight. If we need to, we can do it again.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure which way you want to go.
And these numbers are sufficient?
Right, for now.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, is there a motion to approve this, these amounts at the different depositories?
So moved?
Moved by Gandy, second by Esti. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
All right. We will go on to ordinances. These are third and final readings. I will briefly open a public hearing between each of these to see if there's any comments. So, ordinance 1215 is consideration of amendment to non-conforming lots and uses. And actually, before we do this, Melanie, do you want to say anything about any of these? Anybody need a quick refresher? Why don't you do two minutes for each one of these and for the public, public use, for the public's ears?
Okay. Jason, can you open them up? I didn't bring my notes with me. So, the amendments to the non-conforming lots will allow, in neighborhoods where it is already mostly developed, it would allow a vacant lot to use basically the average setbacks of that neighborhood. So, particularly in our downtown area where we have some vacant lots, we'll have people that will be able to have maybe like a 10-foot setback rather than a 3-foot setback that's required under the code now. So, it allows for more flexibility and hopefully promotes some in-thill.
Great, thank you. So, I will quickly open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and council, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve?
Moved by Gandy, second by Hamm. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, that's approved unanimously. Ordinance 1216, consideration of amendment to Chapter 20 definitions and general provisions. Again, this is the third and final reading. Melanie, want to give us a thumbnail sketch?
Scroll down a little bit. Let me make sure I'm describing the right line. So, this ordinance changes right of things in the zoning section, which is Chapter 20, different items that have come up over, I'll say, the last five years that I've been with the city. One of them that's highlighted in the middle of the screen that's probably the most substantial is related to temporary storage containers, i.e. trailers and shipping containers that are in people's yards. So, those will no longer be allowed in residential. Well, I shouldn't say they are no longer allowed because I'm not sure if they were totally allowed before. But now, we're making it very clear that they are not allowed in residential areas unless they're associated with a construction project. They also won't be allowed in the central business district unless it's associated with a construction project. There's also some changes to the fencing around pools, making sure that if you have a permanent staircase associated with a pool, that that has a locking gate. So, again, just some odds and ends things that are in Chapter 20. And I didn't mention it with the last one, but all of these went through the planning and zoning permission and were approved.
Thank you, Melanie. I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak to this? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Council?
Move to approve? Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Tohill. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Ordinance 1217, again, this is third and final reading, a consideration of amendment to zoning setbacks.
And this one's more of a technicality, updating other sections of the code that may reference the setbacks that were changed in the first ordinance that you did.
Right, thank you. I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak to this ordinance? If not, I will close the public hearing.
Move to approve? Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Tohill. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Last ordinance for third and final reading, consideration of amendment to pedestrian crosswalks.
So, this is changing our code to match the crosswalks that were put in at Fourth and Merrill with the project that we did last year. We reused the island that was there, and so, this is updating the code to match what's in the field.
Great, thank you. I will open the public hearings. Anybody want to speak to that? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Council?
Move to approve?
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Esti. Got to get her in the minutes. Any other discussion? If not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
The next ordinance is the first reading, and this is related to repealing Chapter 11.36, snow and ice removal, streets and alleys, and a new snow and ice control policy. So, you want to talk about that, Melanie?
Yeah. So, Chapter 1136 of our code outlines how the street department is going to plow the snow and remove ice. It outlines what are priority areas, what are secondary areas. And so, we're asking that that section get removed from the code and instead, it be put into a policy that we can amend at a staff level as needed. I am working towards formalizing policies within the departments, putting them in a numbering system that can be found because I do understand that even though there are policy, the public may still want to view them. So, what you have in front of you then is what would be considered public. So, uh, what you have in front of you then is what would be considered Public Work Policy 2022-2, uh, and more or less outlines the same things that are in the code. Uh, again, just moves it to a policy that we can amend as needed. Um, there is a hand-sketched map on the back defining the priority areas. Um, we will digitize that and make that better so that we can have it on our website as well. Uh, to, for an overview, I will say that, um, and what's changing from the code to the policy is the priorities just slightly. Uh, but what the street superintendent has defined as the first priority are the priority streets or the ones, um, that are outlined in red. These are going to be the higher-traveled streets, D, Kirkwood, Fillmore, um, and then the central business district and getting that piled first. Uh, and then, um, the second priority would be the residential streets, culsacks, and hard-surface public parking lots, uh, the ones that the street crews are in, uh, responsible for. And then the third priority would be the alleys and then removing the snow. So that is changing a little bit from what the previous street superintendent had done. Uh, they, before they were doing the square and removing the snow all at once. Um, they're hoping that this procedure will allow them to get it off the square quicker before everyone gets there, and then they may have to come back the next day to remove the piles. Uh, the snow ordinance that we have is still going to be in place. I'm not sure how much the current street superintendent will want to use it, but we're going to go ahead and leave it in place just in case it's needed.
So, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
And that's related to downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in here, it talks about responsibility of the property owner to remove all snow from the sidewalks. Snow removed from sidewalks should not be deposited on the street. Again, going back several years, when it was my responsibility to remove snow from our downtown business, you know, most of those contractors, in my view, do not have snow removal equipment. They've got snow pushing equipment. So to me, it only makes sense that they push it out into the street and then the city take it away. But that does require them to do it early, right?
Yeah.
Before. Uh, is that, uh, you know, are we in conflict with that? How do we deal with that? How do, how do downtown, or particularly just right around the square, how do they deal with that?
Let me talk with the street superintendent on that. Um, I, I don't know if the thought of not removing the piles right away means, okay, you might have to push your snow down the block to the pile to be removed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't think that, no, that won't happen. But I, I don't, um, you know, that with them hitting the square first, I, I, they'd have to be doing it awfully early. So let me talk with the street superintendent as far as what he has in mind, uh, for those downtown sidewalks.
Okay, great, thanks, I'd appreciate it. I just know it's been a problem in the past.
Uh, no, I have a question too, Melanie, and when the plows go down the street, and they go very rapidly sometimes, they have a tendency to throw it back over people's sidewalks. I mean, when they're throwing that snow, people complain because they've already, needless to say, they've shoveled their walk once. And of course, it becomes much more difficult to shovel up the second time because it's going to be, you know, material from the street. I mean, will they sort of think about that before they really start throwing that snow back over into people's, you know, sidewalks, yards, et cetera, quite so much?
Um, so I think, eh, first regarding the speed, um, I think there, there's going to be some operational changes for the staff that might make that particular part better. Um, but what this policy outlines and really what your code says is the city's primary responsibility is the streets.
Right.
Yes, we say in our code that you have to clear your sidewalks, but we're, th, this is saying that you, as the council, have the highest priority in the streets, and I don't want to say you don't care about the sidewalks, but that's a secondary concern.
Right.
So it is unfortunate that when it goes over to the sidewalk, that that makes more work for the homeowners. Um, the priority is making the streets.
Right.
Um, travelable.
I'll remind them.
Traversal.
Traverse.
The, the other part is, is when, when they're pushing snow, they have to push at a certain speed, otherwise if there's so much snow that they're pushing, they can't go anywhere.
Okay.
So.
They can't fly down the street.
Well, they don't have to, but it, sometimes, speed is important.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so with that rundown, um, I'll open the public hearing. Since this is the first reading, is there anybody that wants to speak to snow removal? Not, a quote.
I don't live in Fairfield, but I noticed.
Please come up here, Janos. Thank you. I know, but they can't hear you from there without the microphone.
Like, do you contract, do, do you contract the snow or removal? Is that the city?
No.
No, the city doesn't with their street crews.
So you must have had new employees, very good ones. I noticed that last year, when we got the first snow, I come from outside the city and I was amazed how fast and how well they cleared the, uh, the street. So I know we always look at the negative part, what doesn't get done, but it was a compliment to all of you who did that.
There were some changes in how we plowed last year, um, but there probably will be some more changes this year on how we plow. So hopefully, particularly the red routes, uh, that are marked on the map will look even better this year rather than what we've had in the past with caked-on snow on the, on Burlington and stuff like that, so. There, there were some changes and we're hoping that improves this year also.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Not, I'll close the public hearing and, um, let the counsel. You want to move this to the second reading? Is there a motion?
Yes. I still move.
Okay, move by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Under the mayor's report, I don't have a proclamation, but I do want to note that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And also on October 20th, um, there is, that is the day where people are to wear purple. So if you're so inclined to wear purple to support victims and survivors, and, uh, just know that in our community, there's lots of support in this area, so, um, if you're in that situation, please reach out, get some help. Um, on November 5th, Terry Baker is going to be asking and calling council members also to participate in a, uh, visioning summit. This is called Designing a Destination and Collaborative Visioning Summit. So she's bringing in, um, a gentleman from, uh, a gentleman named Bill Geis from DMO Productions, I think. Such, um, let's see, it's to get a collaborative perspective with community discussions and big-picture thinking, thinking about, uh, tourism here in Fairfield. Um, again, we want to align with what we have in our comprehensive plan. Um, but, uh, at any rate, this is going to be a couple different planning sessions. The first one, November 5th, is from 9:00 to noon. So if you can put it on your calendar, appreciate it. She would like you to come and, and to the general public as well. You are welcome to come to this. Uh, we don't know exactly where it's going to be yet. She hasn't determined the place, but, uh, we'll hear more about that soon as she finds the place. So again, she'll be reaching out to you. We want you to participate. So if you can, put that on your, uh, calendar for, again, November 5th, uh, 9:00 to 12:00. And then I think the next section may be, or the next meeting may be November 22nd, which is the week before, week during Thanksgiving, but again, we'll hear about that a little bit more. So that's all I have on the mayor's report. Uh, John, you have anything for the?
Really don't.
Okay. Alrighty, let's go to committee and board reports. Ways and Means.
Um, Ways and Means Committee met on Thursday to discuss the, uh, proposal for the insurance po, company with, uh, the rec center. Um, at that meeting, there wasn't a decision made, however, uh, they had more questions for the insurance company to talk about their system and how that would affect us and what, what increased workload that would require of the city. So Calvin's doing those questions with the insurance company and working through those right now.
Okay, so we'll hear about that again later then.
Yep.
Okay, Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee.
Yeah, we met tonight and we discussed a proposed electric, electric transmission franchise agreement with ITC Midwest, and we ultimately didn't come to a decision tonight. Prior to making a formal recommendation to counsel, we have some questions that we'd like answered, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, Administrator Department reports, project update.
Let Melanie go.
Melanie, go first, okay.
Uh, so starting on the first page, the wastewater treatment plant digested replacements. Uh, this project has been behind for a majority of the work, uh, because of materials. And I'm happy to report now that they are actually ahead of schedule and will be working towards, uh, they will definitely be meeting the December 31st deadline. Uh, the lighting updates, that was removed from your council agenda. Um, the contract didn't get awarded or didn't get signed within the 90 days that the bid was, um, good for. Uh, Moorefield was still willing to do the project, however, they asked for a material, uh, increase. And given the climate, I felt like that was absolutely fair. The change order for that material increase was approximately $6,000, which is the amount that Aaron consigned for, which is why it was taken off your agenda. Um, then, uh, second page, the Highway 1 water main replacement. If you were by the library today, you would have seen their boring rig. Uh, they are actually, um, almost have almost all of the water main installed. They have from Harrison to, um, Madison complete with the new service lines installed. Uh, so we're just looking at the last two-block section to finish and, and then cleanup following that. So, um, with the exception of cleanup, they should be done with their work very soon. Uh, another project that unfortunately, um, went beyond the 90-day bid window, this was due to FAA not, um, signing the grant. Oh, sorry, this was for the taxiway phase three. Um, FAA did not sign the grant until after the 90 days was passed, and our consultant didn't want us to sign the contract with the contractor, until we had the grant signed, um, just to make sure that we weren't obligating funds that, um, may not come. And, uh, so the contractor for that job, uh, decided not to hold his bid beyond the 90 days. He was looking at a $17 or maybe it was $13. It was still a lot, um, per cubic yard of concrete increase to the price, um, from when he bid it, and he was not willing to hold it. And again, I, in this conditions, I completely respect that. So we're going to be, uh, working on rebidding that project, uh, for the spring. Um, and then finally, uh, a couple weeks ago, I spent the day at Second and Broadway, uh, watching the traffic there, and, um, the police lent me a radar gun. They didn't give me a ticket book, but they gave me a radar gun. Um, and in short, that, in, in comparing when I was out there to the studies that were done about a year ago, there was no significant. There was no significant change in the, the amount of traffic or the movement of traffic. For example, we didn't see a ton more people using Broadway than before the light was out. Uh, so they're really not seeing any difference, uh, which is good. And, um, however, that there were a lot of people still unsure how to navigate the intersection. Prior to being out there, I was thinking, things are going great. We haven't had any complaints. We haven't had any accidents. Things are just really going good. We should maybe not turn them back on come October 18th. Um, I don't feel that way anymore after sitting out there for a day. I think we either need to take them down immediately or, uh, turn them back on. I have relayed this information to, um, Katie Anderson, the Chair of Public Safety, and the DOT. So, uh, when either one of them gets back to me on how to proceed next, we'll bring that to the council. Um.
What did you observe? Why is it, you think, you changed your mind?
So, um, one of the reasons we use MUTCD is because it's an international, uh, international system. A stop sign looks very similar to the world round. And, um, the way the signals are bagged, they kind of look like the signals are still there. And, um, I think there's drivers, uh, particularly international drivers, that pull up to the intersection and aren't sure what to do. Well, international, older people just, it's uncommon. Um, especially if you haven't been following all of the, um, information we've put out in the public. You get up there and a lot of people are hesitating. Um, but where I saw the problems is we would have one person stop on, um, north, uh, north and southbound, like it was a four-way stop. They would go. The person on Broadway would think the person behind that first car was going to stop. And so they would go and, um, those two vehicles would have close calls. I saw that happen three times in the, um, six hours that I was there. And, um, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to create any close calls either with that, so.
I haven't driven on Broadway, but is there, you know, sometimes there's a stop sign and underneath it'll say four-way or two-way. Do we have?
I believe it says cross-traffic does not stop.
Okay.
But.
But, right.
So, um, anyway, so we will be following up with the DOT on that. And, um, oh, the other thing that I would say that, um, speeds were pretty much what I expected them to be. Um, obviously, that at 6:30 a.m., speeds were a little higher than they were over the noon hour. Um, and, but we did not, I did not have anyone, um, going over 10 miles per hour, which, um, is pretty, uh, is a common, what's the right word, denominator for giving tickets. Um, so that was the other reason why they didn't give me a ticket. I didn't need it.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Um, just, uh, we will have to discuss how we're planning on traveling up to the Iowa League of Cities Conference here, um, Wednesday. Uh, also note that the hotel that we're staying in is not the same one as the conference, just in FYI. Um, I've got, I don't quite remember which one's which, but we're staying at, at the Isle and it's at the Waterloo Courtyard or something like that is where the conference is.
Are they, are they close?
I'm not that familiar with, uh, Waterloo, but no, I don't think they're, they're within dr, walking distance, so.
What are they again? I'm a hometown.
Well, the Isle Casino is the, where they.
South on the Port Road, yeah.
Yeah, and then the courtyard, uh, what, uh, I think it's the courtyard downtown. I'm not sure, Waterloo Courtyard, I've got to look.
I got the app.
They didn't, they didn't do a very good job of.
They give you an address?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think.
We'll have to have a discussion.
By the, um, um, mall, uh, which is close to the Highway 20 and Highway 218 interchange. And then farther south is the Isle Casino.
We'll have to get that, well, we just have to talk about writing, dry, or writing arrangements as far as who's going when. Because you've got the first-time conference, or the first-timers, uh, get-together is in the afternoon, and the mayor's conference stuff is that afternoon of Wednesday. But the first stuff for the rest of us that have been there is later that afternoon, so.
So anybody who's going, want to meet back there, we'll just go over that.
We, we just need to have that conversation.
Okay. Go, get with Aaron.
I'll have the, and for the CD stuff, I'll have that stuff probably done tomorrow, sent out.
I'm wrong, uh, inform you wrong. The, uh, hotel is downtown Waterloo across from the McElroy Convention Center. It's unmissable, but it's in the center of downtown and the casino is out, uh, by the interchange. So you'd have to probably a two-mile drive out. So you'd have to, probably a two-mile drive out to the casino from downtown.
I can give you the infos on here, so.
It's a long.
All right.
And no, I did not make the reservations at the hotel, at the casino, that was what the Housing Bureau gave us.
Okay. And okay, nothing else, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Tohill, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned, thank you everyone, thank you for your time.